One nation, under God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
No.
George is going to be a few minutes late.
No.
And Phil is in Armenia.
Oh, yeah.
Hope he's not starving.
The first item, it looks like the... They're coming now. Yes, there they go. Okay, so the first item is... Let me see though. So Dennis, we really do need to wait for that first item from George to be here, don't we?
No, you'll only be saying a public hearing. Is this, you mean the zone change?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can set a public hearing.
Fine, okay, very good. You can do that with three?
You can, as long as you're unanimity.
Okay.
I would recommend though, as long as you know he's coming, I saw him earlier today.
He's coming in a few minutes.
Probably be better to take another item and let him arrive.
Well, I'm gonna go down through the... So what we'll do is we'll get to you in a moment. George is at a drink rec meeting, he'll be here shortly. I'm gonna go down to item number three. Just as information for the board, one of our police cars struck a deer on Hatfield Lane, and resulted in damage to the car, we turned that into the insurance. I have not seen a report on that. This next item involves Hamilton Park Sewer Lift Station pumps, and I'd like Ken to go ahead and maybe...
I got it, I'll check it out.
Okay, well, Ken was in my office when this occurred, but basically, we got a call from Rodrick, who oversees the Hamilton Park Sewer Lift Station. And we had a catastrophic failure, catastrophic failure of one of the pumps, and I think it was number two pump. And basically, these are large pumps, and the main housing cracked and got a hole in it. And it could be repairable, but it was very doubtful if the repair would last. So the professionals were saying, "We need to replace that pump." Well, to get one just like it, had a lead time of eight weeks. So it takes one pump of these two pumps to run. So sure enough, as luck would have it, we didn't have bad luck, we'd have no luck at all. Number one pump, the bearings started going, it was about to freeze up. So we had to have TAM, sewer people come out, and put in a diesel-operated pump. And so they looked at the whole situation over and said, "Listen, guys, we can get two brand-new pumps, new pumps, state-of-the-art pumps, that won't break down two or three times a year like your current pumps are. And it's gonna be $35,000 for these two pumps." So I had Rodrick get up with our project officer Phil and said, "Where's the money coming from?" And so, we'll have to figure out where to get the money. But the fact is, we would have an eight-week lead time on one pump, the other pump being out of business was gonna cost us, normally it's $10,000 every time we pull one of these pumps and rewire something, or whatever it might be. So we now have two new pumps installed, and Ken went out and followed the job, I did not, I took the next day off. So if you can kind of comment, what you know about it.
Luke was out there also, which was good, and Rodrick didn't give me a call back, but soon as everything's fine, he didn't call me back with any bad news. And I've heard any complaints over the weekend, so I'm probably up and running, and once again, TAM Electric, TAM Suicide was the one for jobs. Two K wall, I promise.
Yeah, they had it up and running by seven o'clock in the evening. And I drove by there at seven o'clock and sort of, and they were going down to the village, where it goes into the village to make sure the flow was going through, with a follow-up song.
Well, if we look, I mean, Rodrick's been cataloging these pumps, the failures, and each time they pull a pump, it's $10,000, give or take. Pull it out, we do the load, put the bearings in, or whatever it might be. It appears that we've been having these over and over and over again. And so, if we can eliminate those, the return on investment's going to be good. So anyway, that's that.
Because I want to thank Mr. Law too. You talk about no luck, he's had no luck every week since he's been in office. Another problem. This man's working 24 hours a day, Thursday nights, I'm not going home until this is done. He's up until two, three o'clock in the morning. I believe he was probably still there with highlights. Good job.
Doing a fine job.
Steve, good morning.
The next item, just as information, is the Chief of Police, Dennis Marsh, he's out indefinitely on a leave of absence due to illness. And so, we wish him well. I'd like to let me see, I think what we'll do is we'll go right back up to item number one then, and see if we get started, maybe George will come in and manage this. So Steve, why don't you go ahead and take us through this?
They're the owners of a lot that exists tax parcel at intersection of Gate Schoolhouse Road and 17M. We've got one of the principals with me, it says, "Nice, handsome gentleman in the back." And what we're here tonight for is...
Who is that, who are you talking about?
Yeah. Right. We're here tonight to request the map change, a map modification. We're not asking for a zone change, but if you look just quickly at the second sheet that I have given you, I gave you, you know, the cut sample by our cover letter describing what we wanted to do, but on the second page, you'll see that this particular parcel, the parcel is about 9.7 acres, and it has been zoned in two different zones. There's about, if you look, the yellow line, that's Route 6 or 17M, that's the frontage on 17M, which is zoned HC. The part in the back, which is along Gate Schoolhouse Road, is zoned RU. There's about five and a half acres of the HC along 17M, and then a little or four the RU along Gate Schoolhouse Road. And what the owners would like to do is they'd like to have the zoning map amended to include the entire parcel in the HC zone. If you look on the south side, or the southeast side of Gate Schoolhouse Road, where Lam Electric is, I mean, that's zoned commercial, the frontage is along 17M, it's zoned commercial. And the reasons, you know, you can tell, the parcel's a little odd-shaped geometrically. But when you look at the uses that are permitted, there's a much, you know, there's a higher rate of commercial use available in the HC zone. And we also have some of the bulk requirements that make this particular lot a little difficult. One is, you know, the residential piece, if we included that in the HC, now you have in mind a half acre, 9.7 acres of commercial. We have in the, currently, the bulk requirements in the HC zone, you can only have 70% of the site in progress. So there's, so you've got a reduction there. If the map would be amended, we would at least increase the gross to maximize the development potential for the site. Also, interestingly enough, is that in this particular zone, if the HZC abuts an RU zone, or residential zone, you have to provide a 100-foot setback, 100-foot vegetated setback. So we actually have to create a setback in our own parcel of 100 feet. And really, again, and then if you look in the third sheet, where we have the two pieces, the HC, if you look at the inside red line, those are the, you know, those are the buffers of, you know, the setbacks that would be required if you were to go ahead and develop the site. So again, we're not looking for a zone change, it's really a zoning map amendment, and, you know, we'd like to get the whole parcel in the HC zone.
Now, the property along Route 17M, all the jacks that's in red there, that is currently HC today, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the other one, this one, there's not a house in drawing in either one of these, is there?
Well, there's a house on the NU3 LLC, there is a house, if you look Doug on the third sheet, this one right here?
Yeah.
There's an old square down there, that's actually an existing residence. And actually, the residence is in the...
Where is that square?
Right here.
Oh, I thought, I thought there was one. I thought, I thought, okay, I thought there was, I thought there was a house actually.
Yeah, there's an existing residence there, which ironically is in the commercial zone, not the residential. And there has been some interest, you know, with people on this site, so that's why we're...
It's for sale right now, right?
Oh, yeah.
Because I was by here today. It's advertised as 9.6, I think, on the advertising.
Sorry, get your thoughts together. Steve, I'm interested, why do you consider it a zoning amendment as opposed to...
Well, it's a zoning map amendment. Because we're not really, we're only amending the line of the map.
Well, see, you get to, the point is, the board on its own initiative can constitute or act on a zoning map change with, you know, input, public hearing. A zone change requires a petition from the applicant, indicating their consent or request, if you will. And I'm just curious as to why you classify it one way. So we had to talk about this.
Wait, because, you know, from my opinion, it's a much easier and simpler, it's more of an administrative step to amend the boundary of the map versus making a zone change.
But the fact is, you're changing the zoning of that second parcel.
Correct.
So it is, I mean...
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Do you know, Steve, what's located to the west of the RU parcel? Is there a house on that lot? I mean, that RU parcel is solely on Gate Schoolhouse Road, I'm guessing it's X number of feet off the intersection.
There's a, if you, yeah, there's a couple of houses, actually, if you look right at the corner, that turn on Gate Schoolhouse Road, there's a driveway goes up in there, there's a couple of houses up there.
Right.
And then there's another house that comes off of 17M off the bigger piece.
Okay, and then immediately to the west of your perpendicular boundary line on the RU parcel?
There's one house on that piece. It's probably about where the E is on site, suspect.
But all those other RUs, along Gate School Road, they have no home, then?
No, there's, there's two residences on the two lots.
Okay.
And then there's, up in the, up in the upper corner, there's a group of...
It's hard to see the houses when you drive around, right?
It's all, it's all the one wall, you're driving.
Yeah, I've been out there many times, and I just don't recall.
It's a couple of...
So in essence, we're approaching on these residences with another parcel, like with the boundary of this up on Gate School Road, except across the street, of course, we've got HC on that big parcel behind all those on 17M. What's in there?
I believe that's Lam Electric.
Okay.
Very important. Well, Lam Electric, which is on the highway.
Correct.
But the other parcel's got a line there, I guess that's what you're asking about, right Doug?
Yeah.
The one that stands by itself, Steve?
Right.
You see all the little checks where Lam Electric is?
Right.
Lam is all along here, right?
Right.
I think he's asking about this one.
I don't think there's anything.
Actually, that would be actually across the street from the one that you want to change.
Right. What we'd like to do is have the line kind of go straight...
Right.
Now, I did have a question, but now that I saw there was a for sale sign, the question, I was gonna ask you what were your plans to do with the property, but you don't know what the plans are because you got it for sale.
Correct.
All right. Because I figured there was a reason why you were doing this, because you had something in mind, but now, okay, I'll take that question back.
Go across the street from that, that's the commercial, that's the Alford landfill, and then diagonally across from that, that's the Rick's Gun Shop. Now, we were, okay, we were talking about the other side of the road, direct across Gate School Road and the street.
I don't know. That's Lam Electric.
It's the back end.
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, okay. All right, any other questions from the board? So then, we need to set a public hearing for this, for this...
More importantly, you need to determine how you want it to begin.
That's what I was gonna ask.
An application for a zoning change would require a referral through ERB and the planning board for study and comments. Map change...
To me, you know, my take on this, it's a zoning change.
I understand.
You know, I don't know, what's...
Yeah, that would be mine also, only because I don't think there's any difference, really, in how it will be tracked and how it will be moved. You're still gonna seek the referral and recommendations from your ERB and your planning board, and a public hearing is still required. Well, the only difference is, Steve would know, I'm sure, that we would need a petition from the applicant, but I'm sure the applicant requesting this would have no problem in submitting a petition request.
Let me ask a question on that. So it would have to start with zoning, word appeal, is that what you're saying?
No, it has to be referred to them for comment.
Oh, I see, okay, I'm with you, okay.
The planning board.
Right.
ERB and planning board. Yeah, I, if you must, I started, as long as they're...
No, no, okay, for their comments?
Right.
So that we would have benefit of those comments?
Yes, and I don't think there's necessarily county referral, but yes, that's the idea, to have your professionals in or experts, if you will. Just like they're doing at the present time with the other one out in this area, Kirk.
The one that's in the back near Home?
Right, across the road, partly the road.
Right.
Down the road, yeah.
Where they're gonna put the melton?
Where they want to, yeah.
Right, right, okay. So that started the planning board and...
No, it always starts here.
I understand, but it went there for their...
Yes, yes, in fact, yes.
Right, okay. What about the rest of the board, where are you at, you want petitions, so we can get this, that started that way?
Versus, well, you got to go a year before we do anything.
Well, the only difference with that is, in fairness, you'd be, you know, cart for the horse. If you, no, if you classify it as a zoning change, you should have a petition. This is a request, if you remember, we had a similar situation with Kirk, where we couldn't find a petition, remember, at the meeting, and finding it was disclosed.
And actually, that's one parcel, owned by one party, and it was zoned to, it's a hypothetical difference.
It is, that's why I was just looking for consistency. I don't think there's any downside, other than maybe additional paperwork that Steve has to submit, but that's minimal, it's simply a request from the applicant.
For best goal round, we did a lot of changes on 17M.
We did.
We did, yeah.
We did.
And they were considered zoning change.
Correct, correct.
Because we changed some from regular commercial to just a different type of commercial. And then there was a few that, back in 2004, were skipped over, they were still residential in those, because it is 17M.
Right, exactly.
And you need that commercial.
Okay, so, George, let me see if I can bring up speed. See this, this picture here, okay? This is, this parcel's along 17M and this is Gate School Road, all owned by one party.
Is that what you're saying?
The HC is five and a half acres, the RU is four acres. The question for the floor was, is that it's very consistent with the Kirk property, we hand you a couple of weeks back, but the request tonight is, is to just make a, what you call it, zoning amendment?
Zoning map amendment.
Zoning map amendment, we could just set a public hearing, I guess, and do it without the input of the planning board or the zoning board appeal. But to be consistent with what we've done with the Kirk property, since it is, in fact, a zoning change, this RU, they want to make HC. So, so there's all HC, and I don't think we're gonna have a problem with that, but to be consistent with what we've been doing, Dennis is bringing up the fact that it's probably in our best interest to have a petition from the landowner...
Correct.
...to change this RU to HC. Petition come here, we'll have a public hearing, and then we'll send it back to the planning board, and the zoning board appeals for their input. Now, that input prior to the public hearing?
No, in fact, what I would envision, it's like everything else, we don't drive the applicant's timeline, but if they got the petition in by Thursday, Thursday evening, assuming it was in proper form, I assume with you, you could set your public...
Public hearing, yeah.
Right, and then you could even open, and you just keep the public hearing open until such time as the planning board and ERB didn't respond to you. Same thing you're doing with Kirk, if you remember, you've got a public hearing coming up on that. We haven't got the comments back from the planning board. If we don't, we just continue with public hearings.
Okay. Is that where the board wants to do that? I think that's where we'll probably be consistent with what we've been doing, if we can get a petition.
Correct.
Get that by Thursday, we will set the public hearing on Thursday.
Right, then we'll make the referrals, and then you're on your way. You lose two days, you know, but I don't think that'll have any effect on a public hearing, anyway.
All right?
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
And listen, I'm glad to see y'all try to do something to those properties out there, I mean, it's... Come on in.
What are you doing with all your free time now?
A couple of yours, George.
Is that your mic? Yes, we need your microphone.
Right, yeah, you have your mic on. Okay. I'm gonna go down, and the, Bill, if you'll hold off just a minute or two, I'm gonna put that to last on the, so the next item is number two, we're gonna do that last, we're gonna make that number nine. But the next item is, with the chief being out, and more than likely, a new chief coming in, I'm looking at what we've been doing in this building. And, you know, we had an audit of the courts, procedures and data and records, and we were found to be out of compliance, because no one ever looked at it. The rest of this building, every year, we have Nugent and Hausler look at it, at an external audit, everything else, the court's office, to my office, whatever, Bill's office. And so, in talking with Phil, who's Commissioner of Police, and with Bill, we think it's appropriate that we authorize the supervisor to hire Nugent and Hausler to audit the police department's records and procedures, just to ensure that the next person coming in as Chief of Police has the best, I mean, has a ground, you know, a good starting point, not that we're worried about anything, but I know I learned a lot when we had the audit of the court. We found things from the audit that we really could do differently and do better. So, anyway, with that, that's the rationale behind this, it's not that I expect it to be wrong, but I wanna make sure that we do the best we can. So with that, would someone like to make a motion with authorize the supervisor to hire Nugent and Hausler to audit the police department's records and procedures? And then, open it for...
So we'll...
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to discuss the, first of all, what's the cost?
Well, you know, the, what was built for the courts?
Court, I believe, is $25,000.
Right, $2,500?
Yeah.
$2,500?
Yeah, so I don't know how...
Now, when we, when we did that audit with the courts, wasn't it somehow connected with the state?
That's a state audit, and we still have to have it independently done by state law.
But now, the police, as it is now, they are incorporated into the audit that we do with Nugent and Hausler, don't we?
Financial records that come to Town Hall receive disbursements, but how they record keep over there in support of it is not separate.
Right, so what is it now that we are going to be auditing over in this?
Okay, for example, how they administer the pay, and the time cards, and the records, and time off, all those things that amount to money. What kind of records do we keep on, and I don't know, but people who are arrested and...
Tickets.
Tickets, and all those things, because we deal with things that equate to money and procedures, and...
Right, I do have, I do have some concerns, especially about the time, you know, the time, the sick days, all the personal days, all your comp time, and all of that, I definitely do have a concern about that, as that has been addressed to us. So the only other thing I would say then is, is we're talking about $2,500 bucks.
That had, you had got a quote from them, that certainly would run in the ballpark.
Well, I think, and it may not be that, the one we had in the courts was quite expensive. This, I'm hoping made close to $1,500, but we'll see.
Yeah, I would think it would be a simple random sample audit procedure, as you stand, you're doing standard, just standard procedures audit.
Right.
They don't really take much money in there at all, so it's not a financial, financial thing.
Yeah, the only other, the only other thing that I would like to say is, is I think that some people, possibly even the police officers, may think of this as adversarial, that, you know, for some reason, we're doing something that's...
Well, so do the people in the court.
Yeah.
I mean, the justices, I'm telling you, I got calls, and there was all kinds of stuff in the paper, they didn't like it either.
Well, but going back to what I said before, and I'll say again, I do have concerns about what's happening with the, especially the time, especially the, you know, personal days, and the comp time, and all other kind of things like that, because I really think that to some extent, it appears to be out of control, and therefore, yes, I would, I would think that, on that note itself, we should be doing something to tighten it up.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Again, I did discuss this with Phil, and he was in agreement that we reached to be doing this, this time.
Still moving.
Yeah. Dennis, can you talk us through this thing on the town towing list?
Yeah. What's happened, in that regard, they kicked on. What's happened of late, as I've had, as a supervisor is aware, as some of the board members may be aware, a number of conversations with our police department personnel about the status, if you will, of our towing list, which we maintain within the town, and how it's utilized. Subsequently, coincidentally, we then started receiving a number of complaints from some of the either citizenry and/or other tow operators within the town, that the system was not being fairly implemented. So I spoke further, in this instance, to Sergeant Faust, and corresponded with Chief Marsh, indicating that our policy is much that of the state police, that we have a list of towing companies which are approved within the town of Ocean, which can be accessed or called when necessary by our police department, and they are done on a single rotating basis. What the basis of some of the complaints are, is that certain towing operations have more than one corporate or limited liability company entity, and as I pointed out to the chief and the department, that that has to be policed, because you should not be rewarding a particular entity because of multiple ownership or multiple establishment of different corporate vehicles, if you will. The state police follows that policy, and they enforce it, meaning if X company is called, and X company sends its truck, that is the single response that day, the list then kicks on to the next tow operator, and if it's Y, who happens to be of some community of interest, ownership or control, as long as Y's vehicle shows up, the police will either honor it, or, you know, reject it accordingly. Apparently, what some of the complaints in the town of Ocean are, is that X company's called, but they send Y company's truck. And as I explained to the police, I don't think that's that difficult to police or to control, and I think it's now being implemented, that they're spending a little bit more time, you know, paying attention to the response, what vehicles are showing up, et cetera, so that no individual businessperson is unduly prejudiced by... so that no individual businessperson is unduly prejudiced by, again, a revolving list where they're behind the eight balls, they have one entry, and someone else has more than one.
I got a call from one of the tow services who said that one of the competitors owned three companies.
Correct.
It was the same owner, so he could be on the list three times. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, and in theory, if they're...
Trucks.
Correct. Then it has to be honored, just like the state police honor it. But when A company is called, you can't send B company's truck. That's what we're getting at.
Yeah, no, it's clarifying, that's how I understood it.
Right, and I said to the police, I mean, this is not that difficult. I mean, you know, police it accordingly, with no pun intended.
Well, I see your letter then to Chief Marsh.
Correct.
They got the understanding through your conversations, but then what will be done?
Yeah, and I distinctly talked at length with Sergeant Faust about it when I realized that Chief Marsh is no longer in place.
Well, I know it was not fixed, I'll get another call.
No doubt.
Okay.
Now, just so the board's aware, I also don't respond to citizen complaints. So although we may have put this in effect, and reviewed it, and reminded the department, if you will, I have not so notified any of the complainants.
Okay.
Just so you're aware.
Very good, okay, thank you.
Someone wants to tell me on the plan, Mark.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, someone wants to go on the talk, they're not in Goshen, you're right?
That's correct.
Oh, they're towing truck in Monroe, is there?
Yeah, many times, what normally happens, yeah, the process is that when the police respond, if the individual or corporation or other involved in the accident, if you will, let's call it an accident, where the tow truck may be required, they are given the opportunity to select whomever they want, from as far away as they want. Because if you remember, we were getting into situations like that where some of these corporations had their own towing company contracts out of the area, and there were double responses. So they're initially given the opportunity, if not, then we access off the list.
Well, the other thing, if you got, I've got New York State AAA.
That's correct.
And I break down in Middletown, they call whoever they're going to call, because it's free, of course, to me, to take to... So, I mean, they're in charge, not, because it's not an accident, it's a...
Understand.
Breakdown.
Yeah, so the individual who's involved, accident or otherwise, breakdowns, they're always given the opportunity initially, we just don't call. At least, that's the program.
Sure.
Well, I, there was another point that I guess is kind of a minor point, but sort of a personal type of experience that I had. My daughter had AAA. So, but the AAA tow truck didn't come for over a half hour. It was blocking one of the roads, so there came a point, actually, the AAA truck did come, so it became a point. But the police officers, and probably rightly so, were saying, hey, listen, we can't block this road for a half hour, you know, forty-five minutes, and so on and so forth, so they were going to call somebody else. But that was not my point. My point is, maybe you addressed it in this letter, there's also the, once they have the control of the vehicle, they have to deposit that vehicle in a certified area?
An impound area, correct.
An impound area. So that, what we're saying with these tow truck operators, not only can they do the tow, but they do have a certified or an area that they actually will keep that car in. Because I think there's a liability issue for us if that is not fixed.
There is, yes, certified is not the appropriate word. Impound, a segregated impound area where these vehicles are stored. And then, obviously, the owner's subject to storage charges in the event that they don't respond in a prompt area. That's why, again, so the board is saying, it's crucial that the police town inform the involved parties of the normal procedures, because otherwise, we're going into a rather strange situation where if they're from out of town, like, well, we'll be back in a week to get it. You better be aware that that weeks could accumulate, storage charges, et cetera. So there's a lot more to it than just accessing it. And in regards to safety issues, yeah, our police are instructed, that's paramount. They've got to, unless it's immediately on the scene, very quickly, they will, in fact, access someone to remove it from the thoroughfare for safety reasons. And then still await the choice, if you will, of the participant for their towing. So sometimes you get a hybrid, too. But it's very important, as you know, and it's just a business, if you will. We have also gotten a lot of complaints from people, directly and indirectly, about some of the charges. And it has to do with, you know, disclosure and information. We don't hire, we don't even recommend, we just have a rotating list, and the officers are instructed to inform the participants in these incidents that look, when you make the choice, you still should talk to the operator of the truck when they come, make sure you understand the charges, on what basis they'll be levied, to what extent, for how long, and if you have any reservations or concerns about it, you don't use them. Because the town is not responsible for those costs. Whereas, a lot of people think we are, because somehow, they got the tow truck through us. Not because of us, okay, directly, I mean, we don't hire, but because we provide that service.
Yeah, and unfortunately, some of those people who were severely injured in those accidents are shipped off to the hospital. They're in the hospital for two, three weeks or something like that. You want their current storage charges.
And may not be aware.
They get a hu, you know, these huge bills, so I don't know how you address it all, but I know it's a concern of some of the white bear.
And if we follow it, because the officers are responsible for the scene, if you will, whatever they responded, whether it was an accident, crime, breakdown, whatever, they have an obligation to pursue, if you will, the informational request. And if there is, God forbid, an accident or a calamity which resulted in hospitalization or whatnot, they still would have had made some contact with a family member or some representative, if you will, of that unfortunately injured person. They'd better go through the same routine with that. And I told them, look, if need be, put it in writing. You know, we can be drawing up just a little informational handout, like, look, be aware that, you know, this is a privately contracted towing operation, and address it as quickly as you possibly can in terms of cost, et cetera, so that you don't get in those situations.
So the police are aware of this and are doing it now?
They are aware of it. I cannot honestly tell you what they are doing. Because, again, we have these recurring problems. I tend to think it's not uniform, and I tend to think it's left to the, if you will, discretion of the officer.
Yeah.
And I hesitate, so I don't want to be getting in the position of writing books and manuals for them, or, you know, but that's how it should be handled.
Okay, well, we started this letter to them, Sergeant Faust, to understand this.
Yes, clearly, he clearly understands.
But it can be quite expensive. I mean, I had a call from someone, I couldn't believe the charges involving a truck. And all of it was quite costly.
Yeah, in fact, just to digress and expand on that, that truck, the accident occurred in Goshen area, but for some reason, Towne Warwick police responded. They in turn contacted a towing company from Goshen, which happened to be on the list, but it was in the proper sequence, who knows? But, yeah, the equipment utilized was very large, very expensive. And the truck driver, I guess, was like a subcontractor with some of these, like the Entenmanns of the world, and that type of company. And it was astronomical, in terms of...
Thousands of dollars.
Right, but again, it was legitimate, in the sense that was the rate, that's what the accumulation was, and apparently, no one was either aware of that or took note of it, but it was too late.
Got it, okay. The next one is, would someone like to make a motion that we set a public hearing date on November 10th, 2011, for a public hearing for our 2011, proposed 2012 budget?
Tomorrow.
Any discussion? It will be 7:30 or soon thereafter, in the Towne Goshen, 41 Webster, Town Hall, 41 Webster Avenue. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I followed the state.
It's the November 10th, 7:30, soon thereafter, Towne Goshen, Town Hall, 41 Webster Avenue. Now, the Assemblywoman Rabbit has written a letter to me on behalf of Keith Slezinski, who is an undergraduate student at the University of Albany, and he's enrolled in the School of Criminal Justice. And he's required to do an unpaid internship by the university at some municipality in our, in a police department. Assemblywoman Rabbit's representative came by and brought the letters for each of us to look at, and I told her, I think that since our Chief of Police is out on extended leave, it's probably inappropriate to have this young student be here at the Towne Goshen. But since Goshen is Goshen, why don't they contact the Village of Goshen, where I think he could get the same internship experience, but he would have someone there to mentor him and all that? So, I shared that with any Rabbit's, the young lady bringing this by, and she was going to pursue that. But I did say, I would review this at the town board meeting, just to let everybody know what I've been doing. So that's kind of where this is at. I will call Assemblywoman Rabbit's office tomorrow to find out what her office has done, one way or the other. But I certainly would like to see this young fellow do his unpaid internship here in our local community.
Right, so when push comes to shove, that for whatever reason, the village can't do it, how to go about it?
Well, I...
I'm not, I'm not.
Did they show you honor it?
I'm not.
I'm not either, because, you know, internships, I know where my... I've been involved in many internships. You want to be mentored by someone in the field who's there every day to show you how everything works and whatnot, and...
He's another personality.
And, right, we don't have the proper people to do a good job with this young fellow. And I think that the villagers, no reason in the world I'm aware of from this distance, to say that they can't do a better job.
Oh, I agree, I think the village would be a better situation. I was thinking that, for whatever reason, village says no.
If they say no, I'll bring it back, and on Thursday night, we'll talk some more about it, how's that? So that brings us into the discussion of the tentative budget. And Bill, come on up and bring a chair. Thank you, Mike. I would like to just say a couple of comments before Bill gets started. First of all, Bill's standing as our budget officer. He's a college graduate in accounting, and he's got a degree in psychology, which I think he needs. Bill has been doing this kind of work for us since 2006, is it, Bill?
Four.
2004, time goes by fast, while we're having fun. This year, we're being held to a higher standard by the state of New York. There's a New York state law, a 2% tax levy cap that was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor. And so this is for all municipalities and all school systems in the state of New York. Now, Mr. Cantorino and myself have been taking this seriously. We went to New Pulse, to a full day's worth of training, along with Bill, on what does this law mean? What does this law mean, and how will it be implemented, so forth, so on? And they had a panel of people, superintendents of schools, and mayors, and whatever up there, and legislators, members of the legislature, up there. On this panel, along with the state comptroller, who is keynote speaker, and there are some things that were told to us by Mr. Bonapoli, the comptroller, of why this law was put in place. Number one, try this one. New York State property taxes are 78% above the national average. Property taxes in New York State are 78% above the national average. So there's a reason to really look at this with great earnest and great speed. New York is broken, we're not competitive. Another one is, and he was talking to the school people, New York State pays more to educate each student than any other state in the Union. Higher costs than any other state in the Union, dollar-wise, for each student. And yet, we come out the bottom, we're 37th in quality of the education program that we, and I don't know what the criteria is, I mean, high school graduates, I don't know. The number going off to college, or maybe all of that. We rank 37th in the quality of result, and yet, first in the cost. And I thought it was really interesting to note, one of the superintendents of schools on the board, who'd come here from McLean, Virginia, and he said, in Virginia, each county has a Board of Education. Each county has a Board of Education. And I don't know how many counties they got in Virginia. But in New York State, we have 58 counties, and yet, we have 700 school districts. We have 700 superintendents of school. They don't come cheap. We have 700s of everything, plus multiple steps in between. So if this man was saying, the superintendent of schools, who had come here from Virginia, by comparing, and so he said, there are lots of things, lots and lots and lots of things that can be done trick or tail cost to make us more cost competitive, without beating up the teachers, which is one of the things we hear the most, it's the teachers, let's cut out teachers, and the cost will go down. Maybe it's the hierarchy that needs to be cut, the teachers in the classroom. But anyway, this was the kind of dialogue that took place at this meeting. And so there's lots of reasons not to do anything, called discomfort, and called, we're going to hose off all the, make everybody nervous in the organizations, and insecure about their futures. And we're going to really make a lot of unhappy citizens because of maybe delaying getting service or changing the services. So there are a lot of reasons that people are not going to want to embark on this change. But for New York to be competitive, we've got to do this. Now, this law is not just for 2012, cap to 2012, it's 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. Five years, we've got 2012 through 2016. This is a big deal. And I'll tell you, I've lost a lot of sleep on this thus far. And so, what we're bringing to the party tonight, to this board, is a lot of the fruits of what myself, and Bill, and Phil have done. And this is just kind of the beginning. So I'll turn it over to Bill to give it his professional shot to us, and then settle over for questions.
We have three budget phases here, tentative, preliminary, and adopted. The tentative, as you can see, was presented to our town 430, met by deadline. At that point, our tentative tax increase was 14.95, 14.95 townwide. For the village portion, 25.01. The preliminary budget stage is now, is between now and November 10th, which is our public hearing, and at which time, we hope to work to get the preliminary budget down to 2% for both town and village. And that's the job this board is, take a look at all the individual pieces that go into it, to see where we can get to go, also on the tent, so that we can adopt the budget. That will be the job of the board is to come up with the best shot you can have. Those are the timelines, those are the steps. On page two, review of specific revenues. The first two, Fund A, which involves the village and the town together, it affects the tax rate for the village residents as well as town. The mortgage taxes, we budgeted in 2011 at 275. For the moment, we're leaving it at 275. A little bit off the mark right now, actual, but we don't have the last mortgage check-in, which we would assume would be mid to late November, where we can get a better idea of whether we held our own on that one or not, and go forward to hold it at 275. Second line item there that most affects the A-line is court fines. Even way down the shares, we started January 2011, and we really were trending much lower than even the 275 we, at this moment, are proposing. In the last three to four months, we've had strong revenue changes. Which gives a little bit of hope that we can bring that number closer to that 325 number. At the moment, though, we're trending right around the 275 to 285 number. So that's something we'll wrestle with, and we'll get an update from the court. I believe the last review I had was through August, so we'll get that through September, and see how September folds out. The B fund, two significant areas for revenues, sales tax. We consistently, I think the last three or four years, budgeted at a million dollars, with our fingers crossed every year. We've been very lucky that we basically hit that number. We keep hearing that those sales taxes are going to go down the trend, and I know that other municipalities, it has happened. They've had to decrease, decrease, decrease. They've had to decrease, decrease, decrease. Negotiate somehow, we've been fortunate to stumble over against that $1 million number. We are taking it down to 900,000. We don't know how long we can be lucky with that number. So at the moment, we're resting at 900,000. That's a decrease to the revenues of 100,000. And to go back to court fines, that's a 50,000 decrease at the moment for that A-line. The other B fund, significant number that we had was the franchise fees. Last year, we had 240,000 in here to cover franchise fees, which come in somewhere between 40 to 50,000 dollars, but in addition to which, we had a proposal that we would be receiving, I don't know if you can correct me on this rebate or refund monies, and public monies, over a period of time from Time Warner, close to 190 to 200,000 dollars. We've not received that. So we do not want to put that back in the budget. First of all, that's a one-time deal, and we cannot put it back in the budget, so that's a line we have to make up. That equates to 190,000 dollars in the B fund for reduction of revenues. So that's a bird's eye view of the big dollars, the big areas on revenues, how will revenues affect us in the two prominent accounts, B fund and B fund.
Bill, before you go to the next category, I ask a question.
Yeah, can you get American on this?
Oh, I am fine.
Okay.
Just so the public knows, for the last, I don't think today when we were talking, we lost over $2 million in mortgage taxes in the last four or five years.
Yeah, in five years, I think.
With revenue.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be exact.
Also, there's a fund balance that we're continuing to show.
Yeah, but I just wanted to...
Don't underwrite absolutely.
We're in that category, I wanted to mention it. That's a lot of money that the town and other municipalities have lost. We've lost over $2 million in the last four or five years. And I just wanted to...
Well, in fact, had we not been cost-reducing all along, we offset a lot of that $2 million. When you get down into the fund balances and continue working, we end this year with no money in the bank, ever, ever, ever. Never have I heard of a municipality ending the year with no money in the bank because of what Lou just said. We've lost $2 million, and we've offset, and at least we're breaking even. Anyway, but Bill, go with your...
Bill, the B fund is town only, right?
Yes. B fund is town only.
Town only. So I'm just a little confused. Why is it under 4B, have village, have 4B village?
That's a mistake. That should be town.
Town.
That's what your school teacher...
I saw that, but I didn't want to ask the question.
So, no. Ah, both spots, I'm sorry. Both spots.
And actually, I guess the A fund should go again.
Well, it should be, but what I do is so that village residents understand what's impacting them in town, which seems to be, technically, it's village slash town. Projected 2011, ending year, fund balances. The A fund, I think when I started here, was close to $1 million. We had several things we needed to do here. First of all, upgrading our software program, which is totally inadequate, our computer equipment, some building maintenance and repairs, and so on. Over time, an income surcharge, surcharges with a lot of legal expense and that sort of thing, and we're now down to a very small amount coming into this year of fund balance. My projection is by the end of this year, because of the heavy weight of the legal expense and some of the engineering expense that goes along with tax certs, anything we had in fund balance will be used, anything we have in the contingency.
But we had, we spent it. But the real thing was, what Lou was sharing was, that we had this precipitous...
Correct.
...all in mortgage tax, which is funded.
And so basically...
So you lose $2 million, and we're trying to manage that.
And that's the reason why we kept the taxes low, because we were driving it.
Okay.
And that's a combination of a decline in revenue and some expenses, but it's specifically on those lines. So the Fund A will have no fund balance, and they'll have no contingency left from this year. Now, we'll see that we'll leave some contingency on that line, because we need to reestablish it, need to get back to where we have, you know, good funds to run any of our funds. The B fund should end the year right around the 338,000 mark with fund balance. Contingency will be used up for 2011, and we have contingency back on the line again for 2012. I have a point that I just want to share with you on those, I mean, it'll come to be later, but specifically on fund balances and contingencies and how they work with us. Page three. At the top, it shows us exactly where we think we want to get for our preliminary budget to present to the public and have a dialogue on, and that is 2% town, 2% village. The cost reductions required for the village levy, and these are items that would help the village residents in their tax bill, would also, you know, would help or hurt them, also help or hurt the town residents. Listed down, reduce town hall maintenance, we had budgeted in there 35,000. We need to take it down to 10,000 and lose 25,000 out of the budget for that item. Highway garage maintenance, highway administration and the garage itself fall under the A-fund, not under the DA or DB, not the highway funds. That piece is still town hall. And we have 25,000 in there as a capital item at this point, and we need to take it down to five and lose 20 out of that. Humane Society and go back, both of those agencies will need to take it again. Humane from 15 down to 10 for a loss of five. Go back, 20 down to 10 for a loss of 10. Highway equipment, which is the DA fund, that still affects the village residents as well. We had 128,000 on the equipment line. We're taking 100 out and leaving 28. And I believe Doug, you could fill in on this if you need to, on the truck that we just talked for, there was a 1990...
We have purchased in the last two years, two 1995 trucks, used trucks, 1995, seventeen-year-old trucks. We're refurbishing them and putting them back in service. We also bought a third truck, new, through state bid. Phil went over and just beat the stuffings out of them. The state bid for just the chassis was 135, and he got it for 105. So we got 30,000 less than the state bids. And we took the old bed and the old plow and the old salter off the old truck and put it on this new chassis. So Lou's group in highway, they were working, and that's one of the reasons why we're in as good stead as we are at offsetting that $2 million that we've been talking about, along with many, many other things, reducing our debt service and everything else.
Just to mention that truck that we got for 105, the chassis, and we swapped out the bed and so forth, that would have came in at 187,000 fully equipped. So basically, we saved about $82,000 on that particular item.
And while we're talking, you know, a lot of things aren't in this. But we reduced our, we just about cut our debt service in half. Phil, what is the number now? Do you know what I'm paying? Less than 5 million?
Oh, it's 3.9.
Okay.
3.8, 3.9, which is, I guess, 3.6% of the state allowable debt, which is extremely low, so we're good there.
Well, we've cut the debt service, the amount of money we pay, take from the taxpayer and give to the banks. We've cut that in half. It used to be over 700,000, now it's a little over 300,000.
336.
336. And then you start out at 788 or something. So the fact is, by not borrowing, we have not borrowed money for operations since January 1st of 2006. This is the operations, not PDR. And that's what's allowed us to luxury offset part of that 2 million.
Highway equipment. The next line item, reducing the Fund A contingency from 150,000 that we have in there now for next year, down to 110,000. I don't like doing that because the contingency is our safety net, along with fund balance if something goes wrong. And I know the Uplands building needs repair, we have some things going on, never know what's going to come up, and so we're looking at taking, shaving a little bit off there. Reducing the legal expenditures as the tax certs go down. Again, this is a moving target, because we don't know what to expect from different cases, but we think that we can move from 86,000 down to 50, take 36 out, and hopefully, we'll be fine with that. Hospitalization insurance is a tough one to take anything out of. Last year, I think the increase from the state was 9.3%. Percent this year, they came in as a preliminary, 14.3. I think it's now at 13.3. They're still arguing the point, but for budgetary purposes, we have to go with what we see on paper at the moment. They may never change it.
Could you make some of the state at 2%?
Well, that's hard. And so that's going to become a long issue, I think, because I'm upset about that, because that's really state-driven, right along.
I know, I know. I had to put one more on.
So we'll take 15 out. I think I'm a little high on that. I'm hoping I'm a little high on that, so we're not going to touch that too much. And reduce wages. With police, from 1.17, down to 893 for a decrease of 224,000. And those wages affect the A, the village and the town together. So this is all A-fund impact, village impact.
Now, when we talk about reducing wages, we're talking CSEA employees and we're talking non-union employees, correct?
That's correct.
So 224,000.
So that comes to just under $1.5 million cuts for that area, 175,000. Are there any questions before?
It's, Bill, you said village reduction, it's actually village and town reduction.
Well, yes, that goes along with page one. It's village, town, but this drives, this is what's going to drive the village tax rate and subsidize the town. But really, it's, this is what comes off, this is where the village is interested. So it's village, town, but this is village interest. Village doesn't care about the town.
We're good. We're covered, we're covered. You know, the page we were discussing in the executive session, you want to make sure that wasn't the last page. I said that it is not.
Next page, cost reductions required for town hall only. Similar to the prior page, fewer items here. Reduced police expenditures from $1,001,000 down to $801, $200,000 decrease. Increase road maintenance program from 300,000 that we had budgeted for 2011 up to 335,000. We've kind of played around with that one, up and down, and up and down. That's really a critical spot, you know, if you want to speak to that point at this...
Yes, the cost of asphalt has gone so high, we're going to get a whole lot less, a whole lot less asphalt next year for 335 than we're getting this year for 300. So even though there's more dollars there, the fact is, we're going to get a whole lot less repaired, and so that's why that's the way it is.
Contingency fund for the DB, which is town-only highway. We have 170 in there, we haven't changed that as yet, so we're showing no change at the moment on that line. And the last item, reduce non-police wages there on the town side, from 710 down to 568, or a decrease of 142,000. The town reduction of costs would be $377,000, and I didn't do the math, and I suspect it gets close to 850 between two, so $850,000 worth of cuts over both of those areas. Two major impacts to be negotiated that equate to this are the CSEA, a decrease of 152,000 between the two funds, plus the non-union of 180,000. That number should have been changed. It's 366, that's not, I believe that's, it's 3...
About 366, isn't it?
332. Actually, the CSEA number was incorrect on this, and I changed it, I changed the...
But I think for the board, the CSEA, there's $152,000 that Phil and I are going to have to negotiate down, one thing. But the non-union part, which is everybody in this room, of us, and all the town hall employees, $180,000 is a big number, big number. And so, but this is, to be at 2%, this is what we're going to be having to do, be working with on that. Okay.
And then the last one would be the PBA, 20,000. Those are two negotiable areas that you guys will be working on relative to that. There is no page five, I believe that's something else that you're going to be working on. Are there any questions on this or any line items, major revenues, major expenses?
Now, the one thing we didn't talk about, that I heard in brilliant light up in New Paltz, is the state is coming down here, so we need a 2% cap on the tax levy. Then, that's in this hand. Then over here, we know we have the loss of revenue. State of New York's got it, federal government's got it, and we've got it. And the mortgage tax, we started out well above 750, down to 275 over a five-year period. And it's not going back up. We've got the lid of 275. That's the new standard. But beyond all, and then the 100,000 for sales tax, beyond all of that, we have, again, the 14.3% increase in medical expenses, 4.2% increase in pension costs, with a police 3.5% increase in their contract.
Plus the benefits.
Plus their benefits are 3.5%. And we're still dealing with CSEA and what we're negotiating, so I don't have a number there.
6.6.
6.6 on workers' compensation. And it goes on and on and on. So you think, boy, we've got all these added costs, we have less revenue, and then the state of New York has said, oh, by the way, be at 2%. And what they're saying in the state of New York absolutely makes sense, because we've got to get started. And I want to share with the board and the public what happened back six months ago. I think I may have shared this before, but it needs to be said again. Macy's came into town and wanted to buy or build a 1.5 million square foot building out behind the New Hampton Site Center. It's owned by Gary Tass, and it's going to be called the Echo Lake Industrial Park or something. 1.5 million square foot building. They wanted to hire 1,200 employees, 1,200 employees. So we whined and dined, the state did, and the county did, and the Patent for Progress did, and, you know, all these different groups, whined and dined them to see if they would come to negotiate. They didn't come to negotiate because of the high cost of doing business in New York State. The site was perfect, perfect. Mr. Tass is in the concrete business. He could build that building, what's 1.5 million square foot? He could do that. But you look at workers' compensation, you look at property taxes, you look at all these other things, where those 1,200 people, you know, some of them may have to come in out of state or whatever, plus the ones from up, and they said, "Don't think so." And they went down to Berkeley County, West Virginia, which is my wife's home county, and I was down there visiting my mother-in-law and picked up the Martinsburg Journal, and there it is, right in the front page, a picture of some congresswoman from Washington, West Virginia, but from Washington, DC there, having a photo op. The building is well under construction, and they're taking applications for these 1,200 jobs, right in print. They got the jobs because they're competitive. Their school taxes aren't like ours. And by the way, town taxes, when we're looking at all this, are peanuts. We're almost being circumvented by the police, by the fire departments. I mean, fire departments and libraries and schools, I don't need to pick on anybody, but the fact is, you're getting a big bang for the buck when you've got your plow, your snow, your fleece, and these other things here. But we are still not cost-competitive. So we're obliged to do something like this and get started. And this is the first year of five. All right, well, the next thing I'd like to do is remind the board, remind the board that we need to, well, I think I ended up going to executive session and talking about that other page, and we may want to come back and set a public hearing for a local law change that would allow us to, if we decide not to go with this 2% cap. I've got to be very fair to you, this is the last night we can do it. I for one, probably not going to vote for it. Phil's already told me he's not going to vote for it, but because we've got to deal with it. But there's some numbers in here that just are frightening, like $180,000 out of wages and salaries for people in this building, and maybe a few in the highway, plus 180, whatever that number was, for the people out in the highway department. So these are big things, big things to comprehend and to do. It's 152 in the CSEA out there, 180,000 non-union, and 200,000 for the PD. All right, Bill, thank you very much. All right, Bill, thank you very much, and thank you for all the work you've done on this, it is a very complex subject, and does the board have any questions on this about the...
I just want to...
Yeah, go ahead.
Join Rec. we need in parkland fees, I mean, it seemed like you hit every agency in the highway, go on recreation, but everyone else is taking major cuts.
And then this movie five... Rec has not been touched to this point.
They're getting 70,000, we're putting in 70,000 this year and 70,000 next year, we can certainly deal with that.
Do we have money in the...
You can't use parkland fees...
I know we can kind of, like, capital gain projects rather than a tax, if we have the money there. If Joint Recreation wants to do something, could we get it on a cap? If it's, I mean, nothing debated now, it's going to, do we have any money in...
What we have there is well over $100,000.
How much?
Well over $100,000. This, there's 32 homes or something being built out on Gatesville Road.
Is that 104, 102, I think you got for that?
Yeah, 104 plus this.
Not every piece of that went right into the park, but most of it gets...
Yeah, there is...
It was 104, it's down there.
Yeah.
The reason, this might, Mike is dead, but the reason why...
We don't, we can't afford to be battered, you're right.
The reason why I was late, because I was at the JRC meeting, it just is a quirky thing. It's a quirky type of thing, you know, Tuesday, we didn't have the meeting up on date, mostly had the holiday. So I have the JRC budget here, and I'll give you a copy of this document so you can see it. They're, they actually are looking at, you know, coming to the chase, they're actually looking for 90,000 from the village and from the town, and essentially...
Each one, 90 each?
Each one, each one 90,000. And as you said, we're looking for, to give them 70. I told them flat out at the meeting that I don't think there was a prayer that they would be getting $90,000. I was hoping that we might be able to stay at the same level that we were at. But anyway, I have the budget here, and of course, what they're saying is much like what we're saying in our discussions, is there's a, they have a bare bones budget there, you know, there are things that are going to be starting to affect the safety of the parks and so on and so forth, so they need the money. However, maybe with the meeting of minds, maybe that's what can be done, because one of the things that comes up every year is blacktopping. So if you had a blacktop improvement that was a significant type of thing, you might be able to use that for the parkland fees versus the budget.
Yeah, but it would have been that way anyway. You're not saving anything, because if there was a big project, you would have used the parkland fees anyway. What I'm trying to say is, if there was a, like, if they wanted to redo that area that we looked at, that was 20-some-odd thousand, if that was the project, it would have came out of parkland fees anyway, it wouldn't have been put on the Joint Rec's budget. So really, you're not saving anything because it would have been handled that way, right, Doug?
However, what they're saying, with their existing budget asking us for $90,000, if in fact you were to take out the capital part that they have in here, then we really are giving them 70,000 plus money for the capital proof.
Oh, yeah, but I'm just...
It would have been funded, the other way around a lot. Making men's...
Okay.
The only other thing, Bill, before I leave, this, I just want to make sure we're here, this is a 2% increase of the tax levy, right? It's not 2% increase of the budget.
All right, we need to make sure it's the levy.
Tax levy, right, and that's what you did, right? Secondly of all, there are some exclusions, I understand.
The exclusions that we have unfortunately do not cover hospitalization. The only exclusion the town will have would be retirement pension, and the ERS employee retirement system is at 2.6, so we'll get to exclude 0.6%. It's probably 1,000 bucks, we'll take it, but it's not, that does nothing for us. The police is 4.2%, so we'll be able to exclude 2.2% of that. Not a lot of money either, in the sense of things, but we do get it excluded.
The exclusions are not factored in here, right?
They are not factored in.
Even though they're minimal.
Right. They're not factored in. There is a chart that I'm going to have to fill out, and I have a whole analysis sheet that I'm going to have to fill in for the state. Once we know exactly what those figures are, once we settle on our budget, we're going to go. And I will present those so that we can save those tax dollars inside that 2% budget. But also, back on Joint Rec, whatever is done through our parkland fees, that is all still an intermunicipal shared service, or however the board determines to operate with that, because it's really not just the towns going to pay for parking lot, it's usually a split deal unless...
I'm aware of that.
No, I'm just reminding you.
Right, no, no.
If it were $100,000 or $50,000 and we chose to do, we might be doing 25, and the village would have to...
Share, share.
So the thought is good, but it needs to take both boards to make sure that those monies are in joint.
Available, available. Yeah, okay.
I think it was also interesting in New Falls that we kept hearing, we didn't hear the word consolidate, merge, we heard shared services and improved government efficiency, whatever all that would mean, but basically, if you have a larger scale operation, you have the economy of scale versus having little ones. Let's talk about the schools, we have 700 school districts. If we had 58, you'd have economy of scale, you could just theoretically do it much more efficiently. And so, we're going to have to look at the town of Gosha as other, every un-municipality in state of New York, and to find out how do, I mean, it's not business as usual. We may all be wearing a different uniform, but working for the same locale, whatever all that means. But you can't have one of these and two of those when one of these isn't required if you have 47 of these out here. It just makes sense. We have a span of control of one sergeant and two policemen. When I was in military, you had one sergeant and 10 troops, I mean, economy of scale. If you had 10 police departments in one police department and you had one police chief versus 10 police chiefs, if you had one highway department versus 10 highway departments, if you follow the economy of scale. So these are the things that I think every municipality is going to have to perceive and pursue. I don't know how easy any of that's going to be, but yet, guess what, folks, it's incumbent upon us to really give it a college try and maybe happen. And, you know, we will, we will evolve over the next five years into something different that we may not even recognize. It'll be a whole lot better. Yeah, I'll let the next guy do that, or Gavin. Okay, any questions about, or additions to the subjects we didn't talk about tonight? Well, I'd like to make a motion, we go into executive session with the intent to potentially return, to discuss proposed settlement of the village-town sewer dispute, arbitration, and a potential new intermunicipal agreement. Discuss a proposed agreement, well, you can take this, it's not ready. I want to update the town board on a negotiation between the town of Gosha and the CSEA unit 7926. Discuss the PD personnel issue, which is the chief of police. I wanted to update the current status of tax search areas on RIA, Gosha Corp., Mindwall, Woodland Estates, Interstate Waste, and there were two others, Dennis, what were they?
Matroc.
Matroc and...
Excelsior. Matroc Equity is an Excelsior.
Okay, well, those, I thought there was still another one, but...
Oh, Eastgate.
Eastgate, thank you, okay. And then, update the current status of the town slash town tax search area appeal. And lastly, I would like to discuss with the town board this mountain we've got to climb that Bill's laid out for us, and find out what they want to do relative to having a public hearing on a local law. Okay, would someone like to make a motion in this regard?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, just for clarification for the public, I guess.
Right.
Clarification for the public, I think I know where I'm going, but maybe I'm not, is this local law that proposed, that could be proposed, we have to do something about that tonight.
We need to set a public hearing tonight.
Set a public hearing for it, and that would mean that you'd need a super majority, and then you could go over the 2% cap.
We would need 60% of the board to vote.
Right, right, and as you've already said, you don't seem like you're going there, and neither is Phil, and Phil is going there, so it would be nice. The only other comment that I'd like to make on that is this, I really find it troubling or, I guess, almost laughable, that we, for the last five or six years, we started this cutting a long, long time before it really got into the fore. And what's troubling to me, and what I have to wrestle with right now, is the fact of, you know, does it become unsafe? Do the roads become unsafe? Do the places where the kids go to go on jungle gyms and the sports fields and stuff, are they starting to become unsafe? And, you know, are we going to be getting ourselves into some really other big hassles and litigation and so on and so forth? So anyway, I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
But I would also like to say, even though they're not living by this 2% cap, the statewide CSEA contract is 0%, 0%, 0% for three years, plus furlough time, never involved in that, and the union, the professional union, didn't meet the expectation, so they got 3,500 state employees got pink slips. So they're dealing with that for this year's budget, it's mine, there's a $10 billion deficit in 2011, 2012, they at least know there's a $2 billion next year, so wars to come. So I don't know, it is, things are moving, and I can't split hairs, I word who's doing what or what, but we've got our charge here to do what we've got to do. Any other comments? All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Bill, thank you very much.